I'd like to call a meeting to order, please rise. We can have a moment of silence. I pray that our servicemen in law enforcement come home safe and a reminder that we keep in our thoughts and prayers those lost today at Pearl Harbor in 1941. Pledge and pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10:4-10 has been complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Here.
Freeholder Kenny.
Here.
Freeholder Koppel.
Here.
Freeholder Tomaro.
Here.
Freeholder Valenti.
Here.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Here. We have recognitions?
Yes, first is declaring December 21st, 2017 as Homeless Persons Memorial Day. Next is recognizing Northfield Bank for their contribution to Feeding Middlesex County. Next is declaring December 2017 National Impaired Driving Prevention Month in Middlesex County. Next is recognizing the 25th anniversary of the Middlesex County Fire Instructors IAFF Local Union 3527. And last is recognizing Bruce Horvath as Chief of the Year 2017 at the Woodbridge Volunteer Fire Company Annual Awards Banquet.
Is there a motion? Motion?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valenti, second by Deputy Director Tomaro. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Koppel.
Yes.
Freeholder Tomaro.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. Freeholder Valenti will make a presentation.
Every year since 2009, a homeless person's memorial has been held in Middlesex County. This year, the memorial will be held in South Brunswick at the VFW Post on Henderson Road in Kendall Park. The reason this year's memorial is being held in South Brunswick is because Christopher Johnson, who was from South Brunswick, received a flag at the memorial in Perth Amboy last year. After the special flag folding ceremony, the flag is usually presented to a homeless veteran. Christopher was the recipient last year. He was an Air Force veteran who sadly died in March of this year. Holding the event in South Brunswick allows us to commemorate Christopher's passing in a very special way. Homeless Persons Memorial Day is always held on December 21st because of the significance of it being the longest night of the year. This draws our attention to what it must be like for people facing the prospect of spending this particular night in no housing or inadequate housing. Tonight, we are presenting the proclamation on Homeless Memorial Day to Commander Bob Kelly of VFW Post 9111, who will take it to the ceremony. Commander Kelly is accompanied by his wife Linda, who will read the poem she composed for the year's memorial in memory of her late father, a veteran and a homeless person. Commander, Mrs. Kelly, please come up to the podium.
Thank you for being here. You're welcome. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Again, I am Linda Kelly, wife of VFW Commander Bob Kelly. I am also the daughter of U.S. Army Sergeant Salvatore Menino, a Purple Heart recipient who served in World War II for three and a half years. For two and a half of those years, he fought in the jungles of New Guinea against the Japanese. On one of his missions, he marched for 19 days and watched many of his comrades die and helped to bury them. It was not until 1995, 18 years after his death, that I learned all of this and that my father had suffered from severe PTSD. My father, a war hero, was also a homeless veteran for a portion of his life. And so I dedicate this poem to my dad, to Chris Johnson, and to all the homeless veterans and homeless men and women who died in Middlesex County this past year and all the previous years. Simply called homeless. Surrounded by people, yet isolated and alone, living in the shadows. I line a deserted doorway, Maytag boxes, cardboard monuments with FedEx labels, and signs pointing this way up, stark reminders of what is and what could be. A day-to-day that begs escape. A shelter is not a home. Passing strangers turn their heads, not one of them a friend. Forgotten human contact. Oh, God, let this not be the end. I wait and watch. Does anybody see me, or does my voice just go unheard? Am I really so invisible? Another unread word? If just one of you would take the time to raise your eyes up from the ground, but instead you just keep walking by, perhaps thinking, but for the grace of God, go I. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Valenti. Thank you for being here.
Wait, you want to take a photo here with the presentation?
Okay.
From Freeholder Valenti? That was beautifully written, and thank you for adding this to the... Next is Freeholder Kenny.
Margaret. Oops. That wouldn't have been good. The next recognition is going to be for Northfield Bank. Northfield Bank, Angie, if you want to come up, Margaret, the committee from the new food bank, or Feed the Hungry? Freeholder? Jennifer? The rest of yous? Jane? Correct?
Yes, Jane.
So, we have McFoods, which Freeholder Valenti oversees through her department, and recently McFoods sort of created a 501, well, they created a 501(c)(3). Not sort of, but I don't know if it's technically McFoods or if it was an offshoot of. So, what I'll do is I will have Freeholder Jane Brady come up and explain what happened. But in the process, you got to bail out when you're in trouble, and I'm getting in trouble. So, in the process, the reason that we're here is Northfield Bank has donated $5,000 towards this new food pantry program that we have. And so, Freeholder Brady will explain exactly what they've done and how it's going to benefit the county. Freeholder?
Thank you very much, Freeholder, and I'm a former Freeholder, so let's forget that for the time being. Very proud to have been one, however. Wanted to thank first Northfield Bank and Angie for this wonderful grant to the new nonprofit called Feeding Middlesex County. Through the efforts of this Freeholder Board for the last 23 years, McFoods has been able to give food to thousands and thousands of our Middlesex County residents. Your support, the support of the Middlesex County Improvement Authority, has enabled McFoods to give out in last year, in fact, I'll use this year's figures, 1.8 million pounds of food so far in 2017. What is happening is the need is even greater than that. So, we formed a nonprofit, Feeding Middlesex County, as a 501(c)(3), so that we could go to corporations, foundations such as Northfield, to get more donations so that we can increase the amount of food that's available to give to those who are in need. That will enable us to make certain that in the months like January and February and July and August, one of the lowest months for food donations, we will have food to give out to those people in need. We are just started. We're only four months in existence at this point in time. We are just starting to look to fundraise. We still will be doing food drives all throughout the year, as McFoods has done ever since it's been in existence. That will continue. The wonderful residents of Middlesex County are the ones who provide the vast majority of the food that is given out. That will continue, we hope, and we expect that it will, but we need to augment it, and that's what Feeding Middlesex County, the 501(c)(3) nonprofit, will be able to do. I again thank the Board of Freeholders. We're going to be celebrating 25 years of McFoods in 2019, and that is to the credit of the Board of Freeholders for your financial stability that you give us, as well as the Middlesex County Improvement Authority. Members of the board are here with me, and you might think that the county employees fade away, or Freeholders fade away, but we don't. We're back, and Jane Liel is back from the MCIA. She is on the board. Margaret is on the board from here, so we continue to work and we look forward to more support. We have called on some of the county folks for other things as well, and we will continue to do so. And thank you very much for this recognition tonight, and of course, especially thank you to Northfield Bank for starting us off. Thanks.
See? You got to know when to jump out, let somebody else get in. Very well put. But the reason that we're here is for Northfield Bank and their generous donation to the new program. And I just want to thank Angie. Come on up here. We're going to, we have a resolution here from the County Board of Freeholders acknowledging Northfield Bank's donation to the Feeding Middlesex 501(c)(3). We thank you very much. Angie is, when they asked her to be on the board, she was a little hesitant because she is very active on many boards, and she is a great representative for Northfield Bank. She is out there in the community all the time, doing a lot of wonderful programs, and so we appreciate what you do and what you're doing here for Middlesex County.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. So, I am going to give this to you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the committee that would like to say something? Anybody? Any food drives going on or anything that we should know about? Now's the time.
There's always lots of food drives.
There's always lots of food drives going on, and if you are a corporation out there and would like to get involved, you go to the...
MCIA's website, and then there will be a link for McFoods.
A link. So, you can go to the MCIA website. There'll be a link for the McFoods.
I don't know if you can...
And the what?
Social media.
And the social media pages that'll explain what they're doing. I know that they just had something out there about Middlesex Borough. Police Department brought in a lot of food for the food bank. Also, depending on how the tax bill goes, if you are a corporation, you still might be able to donate and write off, so this might be a great opportunity for you. But I thank you all for coming out tonight for this. And Angie, once again, thank you, and thank you to Northfield Bank.
Thank you.
Freeholder Valenti, would you like to say something?
I don't think so.
You're good? Okay.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Thanks.
I'm going to have to move my glasses in here.
We'll try.
Would Angie like to say something? I'd like to say something.
I just want to say how proud I am, myself, as Northfield Bank and the foundation for Northfield Bank, for being part of this. As soon as we submitted the paperwork with our executive board, Northfield Bank jumped to the opportunity, and we were able to approve this very swiftly, as we need the money swiftly in our account. Thank you very much. It's an honor and privilege to be here, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, each Freeholder's been provided with a list of correspondence received by the Clerk's office since our last meeting. The correspondence will be kept on file on the Clerk of the Board for reference.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
So will.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Deputy Director Tomaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes for approval.
Board of Chosen Freeholders, regular meeting November 13th, 2017, at 7:00 PM.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Deputy Director Tomaro. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Koppel.
Yes.
Freeholder Nara.
Yes.
Freeholder Tomaro.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. Okay, introduction of, first reading, the Clerk will read ordinance number 17-004 by title only.
A mandatory bond ordinance number 2017-004, bond ordinance amending bond ordinance number 375, bond ordinance number 383, bond ordinance number 390, and bond ordinance number 393, providing for various highway and bridge capital improvements and various engineering capital improvements by and in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, repurposing unfunded debt authorizations of bonds or notes in the amount of $8,442,519.97 in existing county bond ordinance to finance the cost thereof and authorizing the public hearing to be held on Thursday, December 21st, 2017, at 7 o'clock PM.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 17-004 by title only?
Motion.
Seconded, a motion? Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Deputy Director Tomaro. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Koppel.
Yes.
Freeholder Nara.
Yes.
Freeholder Tomaro.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes, reports of Freeholders. Freeholder Ken Armwood. Thank you, Freeholder Charlie Kenny.
I'll disappoint you. The Roosevelt Family Ice Skating Rink is now open. Thanksgiving weekend saw record numbers of skaters, and this season, we have seen an increase in visitors taking skating lessons. Aside from the regular sessions, the family ice skating rink is available for group lessons, birthday parties, and private rentals. The rink will be open until April 1st, 2018. For a schedule or more information, you can go to our county website. Also, don't forget that the 28th through the 30th here at the State Theater, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat will be playing. Once again, this program is usually sold out every year, so make sure you get your tickets early so you can attend. I know we've gone from beautiful, warm, 60-degree weather to the possibility of snow this weekend, but our public works under Gary Vesz is ready to roll. We are monitoring the Weather Service, and we also have our plows and our spreaders on our trucks and ready to go. The salt domes and the calcium tanks are full, and we are prepared for hopefully whatever Mother Nature throws at us. Hopefully, it'll be nothing, and it'll be 60 degrees again by Monday. But construction has been completed from the Engineering Department. Construction has been completed for the replacement of the emergency generator for the County EOC, Emergency Operations Center, located at the Middlesex County Fire Academy. The twin generators that have been installed provide an uninterrupted power source for the entire building in the event of a power grid failure during an emergency situation. And this project was funded through a FEMA grant. And that's all I have, Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Leslie Koppel.
Thank you, Director. Periodically, as part of our capital budget maintenance process, we continue our efforts to maximize capital dollars by closing out completed projects which came in under budgeted estimates. These capital surpluses, balances, are co-mingled and repurposed using an ordinance, a mandatory process, in order to fund projects such as resurfacing and other improvements on county roads, rehabilitation, replacement and improvement of county bridges, roadways improvements, improvements to various county intersections. This ordinance will repurpose $8.4 million for such projects. There are two main advantages of amending existing ordinances rather than creating new ones. First, not issuing new debt, which would in turn would not increase the county's overall net debt, as well as to not increase the county's, the county annual debt service, will ensure that the continued AAA bond rating. Secondly, the legal cost to amend existing ordinances is considerably lower than the cost associated with the creation of brand-new capital ordinances. These are savings for Middlesex County taxpayers. And that concludes my report, Director.
Thank you, Freeholder Koppel.
Thank you.
Freeholder Shanti Nara.
Thank you, Director. Last month, our recycling division held its final electronic e-waste collection for this calendar year. Once again, the staff did a remarkable job in servicing over 825 residents and collecting in excess of 6,200 pounds of computers, 2,000 pounds of computer monitors, and 34,000 pounds of televisions. I would like to commend the staff for their continued commitment in keeping Middlesex County the number-one leader in the entire state for recycling for the fourth year in a row. I truly am so proud of everybody who works in that department, because what they do each and every day throughout the year is a wonderful thing, and it is really, it puts Middlesex County in a terrific place within the state. The winter holidays are a time of celebration, of course. December marks the beginning of the holiday season, which includes Hanukkah, Christmas, Kwanzaa, and New Years. That means more cooking, home decorations, entertainment, and increased risk of fire and accidents, unfortunately. Each year, fires occurring during the holiday season claim the lives of over 905 people, injure more than 3,200 people, and cause over $2 billion in damage. According to the United States Fire Administration, there are simple lifesaving steps that everyone can take to ensure a safe and happy holiday season. Some simple safety measures include not overloading electrical outlets and keeping space heaters and the like away from trees and decorations. Please, I implore everybody, to enjoy your holiday season, but remember to be vigilant and keep you and your family safe. For additional fire safety tips, please visit the county's website and scroll to "Winter Safety Tips." And that is my report.
Thank you. Freeholder Deputy Director Charles Tomaro.
Thank you, Director. Our 2018 reorganization of the Board of Chosen Freeholders will be held at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, January 3rd, at Middlesex County College Performing Arts Center in Edison. Myself and Freeholders Sante Nara and Leslie Koppel, and Sarah G. Kevin Hoagland will be sworn into office during the meeting. I look forward not only to the event, but the New Year possibilities and promise. The MCIA is consolidating division operations by moving recycling division to their main office, which will result in a savings of approximately $125,000 in 2018 and $75,000 each year after. The consolidation will improve efficiency, reduce costs, and improve interdepartmental operations and communications. Also, the new 2018 recycling guide is being completed and will be available online through the MCIA website. And that is my report, Director.
Right, thank you. Freeholder Blanquita Valenti.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. Throughout the fall, we've shared information on various efforts the Board of Freeholders and county employees have made to provide relief to people impacted by hurricanes. Tonight, I want to recognize an effort that helps people closer to home. As we mentioned before, a food drive was held in late October, early November, in all of our county buildings to benefit McFoods, and more than 8,000 pounds of food was collected and has already been made available to local residents in need. I want to thank everyone who facilitated or donated to this effort. And from our Office of Human Services, tonight, a proclamation is being issued in honor of National Impaired Driving Prevention Month. According to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, every day in America, 28 people die as a direct result of drunk driving crashes. Middlesex County is a partner in the effort to make our roadways safer by promoting awareness of the problems associated with driving under the influence, educating convicted impaired drivers, and when appropriate, referring them to treatment. The Middlesex County Intoxicated Driver Resource Center program provides the education and screening program for convicted drunk drivers, a mandatory program that saves lives and reduces DWI's throughout the county. I encourage everyone to be conscious of the risks of impaired driving and to drive responsibly. And that's the end of my report, Director.
Thank you. I would just like to echo Freeholder Shanti Nara's comments. It is the holiday season. I would just urge everyone to be safe in your travels, and I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and again, enjoy the holidays with family and friends. Mr. Kelso, any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to public on any resolutions listed. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, members of the board. My name's Charles Cradaville. I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. Have a few questions about your agenda tonight. Would like to understand the, I guess this is labor agreements with the seven unions, seven different unions?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to hear just a little bit about the basics of that, and I also want to know about 39 is the hiring of John Hoffman. I want to know if there were any other bids, if this was the lowest bid, or if there was a bidding process.
That's a professional services, isn't it?
And I'd like to learn a little more about 56 is your agreement for the Joint Health Insurance Fund with North American Insurance Management Corporation. 78 is the county membership in the Perth Amboy Waterfront Brownfields Development Area, and I'd like to just learn a little bit about what that is. 93, I'd like to know about the inter-local agreement with the Improvement Authority for vehicular fuel dispensing facilities. And as somebody who really appreciates people who do volunteer service on the boards and commissions, I'd like to see in the future that you would list the actual names of the members who are being appointed. I see Resolution 2014, 2015, 2018, 2020, 2023, it just says "appoint members," and it doesn't say who the members are, and so really, you know, I feel a little bit in the dark about that, and would hope that there'd be like maybe even a place on the county website where all of the boards and commissions would be listed and all of the members would be listed. I know the city of New Brunswick does that, and I, as somebody who really thinks that's an important thing, and as a journalist, and it's important to me, I would like to get the list of who's being appointed for these offices and encourage you to, in the future, be more transparent on it, about that, on your agendas and on the website. And then I really want to know more about the MCAT bus system and this agreement with New Jersey Transit is 2038. I guess we're going to lease a medium bus to replace one that, I don't know what happened to it. I'd just like to learn about that, and that's all.
Okay. We can go with John Hoffman. That's a professional service, Mr. Kelso.
Yeah, that's a professional services agreement to provide legal services associated with open space acquisitions. The agreement was actually approved in January of this year, and it's done through a request for qualifications, and this particular resolution is just amending that to provide an additional $15,000 for additional work that was needed through the end of 2017.
Okay. Brownfields, the Brownfield Agreement or the membership? Director?
Director, the properties that we acquired in Perth Amboy, the future Perth Amboy Waterfront are all exist within that Perth Amboy Brownfield Development Area. By having membership in that association, that gives us access to funding through the AGSRF grants that we require for the development.
93, you said?
Yeah, the vehicular fuel dispensing facilities.
That is just agreement with the MCIA. They get the fuel from our fuel system.
And where are those? Where are they?
I don't know exactly where all the fuel sites are. Are they enough?
We have a number of facilities all over the county that are strategically located in the parks and public works, so these facilities are central to various county offices. The MCIA is going to benefit from the cost of, we get the, they go rate, and they benefit from that cost.
This is not the business that's involved.
Understood. That was my next question. Thank you.
Okay. Your MCAT question?
Yeah.
Just a regular recycling, what type of stuff?
So, they're all provided by NJ Transit?
No, all.
Or, okay. And how much is the leasing cost?
For me, it's like a couple thousand.
Okay. I'll follow up. And so, there were a couple we missed, the labor agreements and the health insurance fund agreement?
I'll have to wait until Mr. Palamina gets back in, because he had, he had been called phone call. call, but I will have him get back to you on that. The names, as far as list of names, we can supply you with those names of people that are appointed to them. Okay, we can consider maybe putting them.
I heard this petition, and actually, we considered that. May I have the names here tonight as well? For the long list, we didn't have to share that.
Thanks so much. And yeah, just on the labor agreements, what are the basics of, this is for the next three years? Is this all of the county's workers? Is this, are there going to be raises? Are there any?
Time's up.
They're basically two percent raises across the board.
Two percent annual raises?
As per the cap.
And this is all of the, the unions are covered by this, or are there any that aren't?
I believe all of them are.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public on any resolutions listed?
Motion to close the public portion?
Second.
Motion to close, by Freeholder Deputy Director Tamaro. Second, by Freeholder Valente. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Kelso, is there any, do you have any vote on anything separately? Freeholder Director, nineteen ninety.
Freeholder Director, nineteen fifty-two.
Okay. Mr. Kelso?
Yes, Freeholder Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of Resolution Number seventeen dash nineteen thirty-four to Resolution seventeen dash twenty fifty-eight, excluding Resolutions seventeen nineteen fifty-two and Resolution seventeen dash nineteen ninety.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Deputy Director Tamaro.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Just for all of them, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Freeholder Koppel?
Yes.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Reyes?
Yes.
And finally, Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Freeholder Tamaro, and that's Resolution seventeen dash nineteen fifty-two.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Nara. Well called.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Koppel?
Yes.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro?
President not voting.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Reyes?
Yes.
And finally, Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Freeholder Kenny, and that's seventeen dash nineteen ninety.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Koppel. Well called.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
President not voting.
Freeholder Koppel?
Yes.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Reyes?
Yes. Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting to the public. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Al Portano from North Brunswick. I have reason to believe you're in collusion with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority. I told you this last time I was here. I estimated since the birth of the Improvement Authority in nineteen ninety-five, you turned over the Tamarack Golf Course over to the Improvement Authority for the resolution, and that golf course, when you turn it over, were making over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year. Since then, I asked you how much money in the last twenty-two years that they returned back to the county taxpayers. I haven't got an answer yet, okay? Next, I ask you about the Meadows Golf Course. Two meetings ago, not I was here, you told me the Improvement Authority purchased the golf course. In the next meeting, I asked you the same question, and you told me the county purchased the golf course. Where are we now?
The county owns the golf courses.
Who purchased it? It's all over the internet that the Improvement Authority says they purchased the golf course in nineteen ninety-nine. Take a look.
All three golf courses are owned by the county.
Why is it all over the internet that it's purchased by the Improvement Authority?
I don't necessarily believe everything that I hear and see on the internet, but the answer to your question is, the Meadows Golf Course was originally purchased by the MCIA, has subsequently been conveyed to the county, I believe the year was 2014. As it stands today, all three golf courses are owned by the county and managed through management agreements by the Improvement Authority.
Who put up the four-and-a-half million dollars to purchase the golf course in ninety-nine?
I wasn't here then, I don't know the answer to that.
I want to know who purchased it in ninety-nine.
The Improvement Authority.
With the taxpayers' money. Now you're telling me the Improvement Authority's got it.
No, I didn't say that.
We're not saying that, that the Improvement Authority has.
You said it last time I was here, though. Don't tell me you didn't say it. You said you're under investigation by the State Attorney General.
We did not say that.
Are you going to deny that?
We did not say that, sir.
You said you're not under investigation by the State Attorney General?
No.
You must have said that in three meetings already.
I'll restate what you said.
Forget it. I don't want to hear no legal crap. I turned this into the FBI with that agreement. You passed that resolution, Resolution Number sixteen six eighty-two R, given the Improvement Authority a million four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars unauthorized. That's a criminal offense. You people didn't follow the contract agreement at all. You lost it. I gave you a copy of it back in July the twenty-second. I handed it to yous. If you followed that agreement, you would have terminated the Improvement Authority from the golf courses. It's right in the agreement. They violated everything in that agreement, and don't tell me they didn't. Next thing I noticed just recently, I was at the golf course at Tamarack, and I noticed a new vehicle, brand-new. On the side of the vehicle, they're advertising the three golf courses. Who purchased that vehicle? The county or the Improvement Authority? Improvement Authority guy was driving the vehicle. Who purchased it?
I don't know what vehicle you're talking about.
Anyway, it's a brand-new vehicle, and my concern is, if you, if the county purchased it or the Improvement Authority purchased it, there's a big clause there. You don't know? Nobody here knows.
Well, there's many vehicles that are there, and I can't answer who owns the vehicle. Did you get a vehicle number, sir? Did you get a vehicle?
No, but I could have. I could have took a picture of it.
I'm sorry?
I could have got it.
You could have, but you didn't.
No. You want me to bring that back to your next meeting?
Or you could call my office, and I'll answer your question if I can. If I can't, I can't.
I called your office. Remember, I called your office, and I said, "Why are they still giving out free golf?" And what'd you do about it?
If there was free golf given out, and if we knew about it, we would suspend.
I told you about it. What are you talking about? Called you up and told you about it.
You have to give us proof, sir.
Proof? Ask anybody there to tell you the proof. Ask any golfer. What a joke this is.
Time's up.
Your time is up. Thank you, sir.
No kidding, my time's up. I'll be back next time.
You state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Milagros.
Good evening. My name is Milagros.
Soy residente acá en New Brunswick. Pertenesco a la organización Project Esperanza.
I'm a resident here in New Brunswick. I'm a member of the Esperanza Project Organization.
En esta noche venimos a hablar sobre, pedimos que el condado haga una póliza para aceptar los IDs.
And we're here tonight to speak about the issue and ask that the county create a proven policy to accept municipal IDs.
Tanto como aquí en New Brunswick, Highland Park y Perth Amboy.
Including the municipal IDs currently that exist in New Brunswick, Highland Park and Perth Amboy.
Luchamos por los IDs porque hoy en día hay muchas personas que no pueden visitar a sus familiares en las cárceles.
We fought to gain the ID program here in New Brunswick because there are many people who lack IDs to do simple things like visit loved ones in the jail.
El programa de los IDs comenzó en el mes de septiembre.
The New Brunswick ID program started just recently in September.
Y sabremos que el alcalde de New Brunswick escribió al condado para que se reconozca los IDs de New Brunswick como ID válido.
And we're aware that New Brunswick's mayor, Jim Cahill, had written to the county asking that the county recognize the New Brunswick Municipal IDs as valid ID in its facilities.
Yo también tengo mi ID, que los enseño.
I have, she has her New Brunswick Municipal ID.
Pero les pido por favor que ustedes acepten esta póliza para que así las familias puedan ir a visitar a sus familiares en las cárceles.
And we ask that you create a policy to allow folks to use this ID as valid ID to visit county facilities, especially those visiting their loved ones in the jail.
Muchas gracias y buenas noches. Que tenga feliz Navidad.
Thank you very much. Good night and have a happy holiday.
Thank you. Thank you. And I will just have our warden and our county council, and we'll have a meeting between the three of us and the administrator, and see if we can consider that.
Mi nombre es Gudelia Marroquín y vivo aquí en la ciudad de New Brunswick.
My name is Gudelia Marroquín. I live here in New Brunswick.
Y lo mismo que estaba diciendo la señora de las ID's, pues pedimos que pues las acepten en la cárcel.
And like my colleague here, I'm here to ask that the county accept the municipal, New Brunswick Municipal ID as valid ID in the jail.
Y pues una, eso es una, como a mí y a muchas personas, pues tenemos muchos familiares en ese lugar, y pues queremos ver a nuestros familiares, y pues se lo pedimos por favor que, que el alcalde de aquí escriba a la ciudad.
And I, as many other people here in our community who have had loved ones incarcerated in the jail, we just want to be able to see our families in the jail, and so we ask that the county make that possible.
Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening once again. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I noticed on your 6:00 PM meeting agenda, you did have a closed session discussion about the detainers. Can you tell me, has the policy remained in effect? Are there any changes? What's going on with that?
We did not change the policy. The policy remains in effect.
Okay. I do want to say right off the bat that I'm proud to have Congressman Pallone represent this district because he voted against the motion to table those articles of impeachment this week, and I think that was the right thing to do on that vote, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to ask the freeholders, if you're, in light of the folks that are pleading guilty to felonies and being indicted, do you, do you want to take a stronger position on impeaching and removing the President of the United States?
I answered this before many times. I'm not going to take a political position here on the Freeholder Board.
Okay. I did want to ask about the Improvement Authority, actually. Is Mr. Albanier still involved?
Yes. Yes, he is.
Okay. And how much is his contract for?
No, I don't recall. I can get that to you, sir. I don't recall.
Okay. But it's a significant amount of money, and...
It's equal to or less than what was as part of the contractual arrangement, because now he's still overseeing the golf courses and the management of those golf courses. But I can get the information to you, I just don't remember.
Okay. And I remember when he was brought on, it was a temporary interim arrangement because there was no executive director, but now that your former colleague, Freeholder Polos, is now in that role, is there any plan for Mr. Albanier to step aside, or are we going to continue paying both Mr. Polos and Mr. Albanier?
We haven't made that decision yet for whether it's going to be long-term or not.
Okay. And so I was very interested in the comments by, well, all the speakers tonight, and I encourage you to certainly accept the New Brunswick Municipal ID. I think that's a great thing. But also, I wanted to learn a little more about the golf course situation, because it actually, this is dated March 24th. It says "Free Golf Day," and I don't know if everything that that gentleman was saying was correct, but I want to, I want to know, what does that mean? You said if anybody could present you with proof that there was free golf given out, that you would do something about it.
That was a promotion that the MCIA did to attract golfers to come in on a one-time basis. The gentleman that was here before was inferring that, like it was an ongoing basis, and that's not the case.
Okay. And I guess the terms of the original agreement between the MCIA and the county, did it state that the MCIA would be responsible for all of the maintenance? And didn't you sign off on that, like he said, you know, nearly one-point-five million dollars for that, I believe during Mr. Albanier's time when he was in the role? Or maybe it was at the end of Mr. Pucci's term? But aren't they supposed to be responsible for that stuff? Why did the county chip in a million and a half, almost a million and a half dollars to the golf courses?
Again, to keep, to remind you, the county owns those golf courses, and the money that is used to sustain those golf courses, obviously, is the play that takes, takes place there. And as you know, in the golf industry over the last number of years, play has been reduced significantly. As a result, the revenue that's generated from the fees does not cover the day-to-day maintenance and cost of running the facility. When that happens, ultimately, the county has to play a role in providing support to make sure that happens, and that's what takes place.
All right. So do either of the authorities, the utilities, or the Improvement Authority contribute any money back to the county, or do both of them, are they just independent, revenue-neutral, or depend, actually depend on the county?
Yes, question again.
Is there any, like, is there a surplus or some sort of, any, any benefit to the county that comes from these authorities financially?
At this point, no. From the Improvement Authority, obviously, you know, we have the long-term care facilities, which we help and subsidize, because we feel it's an important part of what we do, but we also have the same thing with, at this point, the golf courses, but ultimately, if they were revenue-producing, that, those funds would come back to the county.
Okay. And I want to also ask about the SpectreServe lawsuit that was settled for five million dollars by the Utilities Authority. Turns out, the legal bills were actually in excess of seven-point-six million dollars, so that brings the total cost of that case to twelve-point-six million dollars, and insurance doesn't cover it, so the ratepayers in that area are going to have to cover it. What's your comment? Do you have any response to that twelve-point-six million dollar expense?
Tom, I don't, I don't, you know, these are business decisions that are made, and sometimes whether they're, they're done by legal counsel making recommendations for those settlements, but, you know, I just think they're in the best interest of the county.
Okay. Mr. Kelso, want to add anything?
Didn't handle the litigation. Litigation was handled by the MCUA Council, and the board made an independent determination to settle or not settle, not the Freeholder Board.
So it was handled by John Hoffman, who you just appointed tonight?
Thank you. Your time is up.
Yes, okay.
Next, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Peter White. I'm from East Brunswick. I have a question regarding whether or not Middlesex County is a sanctuary county.
We never labeled ourselves as a sanctuary county. That title never came up. It does not exist.
Okay. Can you explain why it is labeled as a sanctuary county?
Well, maybe some political people, or maybe people in the federal government are not happy with our policy, and they say that we are a sanctuary county, but we never made that declaration.
What is your policy?
Not one Freeholder here ever made the statement that we are a sanctuary county.
Good. Could I ask what your policy is? That you...
We could get you a copy of the whole policy?
Could you describe it in brief? Just like, give me a thirty-second rundown, quick.
Tom, the policy deals specifically with interaction of county representatives with ICE. And largely speaking, that would be in two instances. One would be in the county courthouse, the other would be in the county corrections facility. The policy provides conditions under which the county will honor detainer requests from ICE, and those circumstances where it will not honor detainer requests. And there are parameters that have been set forth with regard to someone being previously convicted of a serious offense. In that circumstance, we would honor a detainer request. Where someone is charged with a serious offense but has not previously been convicted, the county will not honor that request, and the reason for that is because there are federal cases that have recently come about, which potentially holds the county responsible liability-wise in the event someone is held on a detainer and is ultimately acquitted of the offense. of the offense. We also, as part of that policy, we will honor a request for someone who has been previously the subject of an order of a federal judge for removal. With regard to the interaction of the Sheriff's Department in the county courthouse, we certainly cannot restrict access for ICE coming into the courthouse, but the sheriff's officers do not assist in any way in the duties that ICE is there to perform in, in their capacity, but is still there to maintain order in the event that there is any kind of disruption that, that results from ICE doing its responsibilities in the courthouse. That essentially is what the policy states. We do, in the policy, provide information to anyone who's being held with regard to their rights associated with any ICE representative who wishes to visit the facility to interview them. We do not restrict access, nor could we, but we do provide parameters under which they would conduct interviews, and that is essentially what, what the policy is.
Why, why is it that the federal government is not pleased with your policy?
Because they would like to, to have us across the board do everything that they're requesting, but we have looked at, looked at it and looked at, by doing that, we expose ourselves to liability, and we, amongst other jurisdictions, have looked at it in the same fashion. And I would add that certain of the things that have come through with the presidential executive orders have been held to be unconstitutional, particularly recently in a case in California, and so we're very mindful of, of the, the adversarial position that the administration has taken with respect to certain municipalities, counties, and states, but what we do is we actively review what the courts are making a decision on, because our responsibility is protect the residents of the county and to protect them from liability.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the public?
Move to close the public portion?
Second.
Motion to close by Deputy Director Tamaro, second by Freeholder Valente, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There are motion to adjourn?
Some will.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamaro. John, don't go away. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Meeting adjourned.